Welcome to the school committee meeting, Monday, November 3rd at 7:00 PM. We are recording this for LCTV. It is not going to be recorded and shown live, though, because it is a select board meeting night, and school committee was the one who chose to move their meetings because of Massachusetts Conference we're going to later in the week, and because of the holiday next week. So, I apologize, but you guys will all be on TV, that everybody can still watch you. So, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe, caring, learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interests of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. And I would like to welcome our Wolf Swamp School students, who are here to present to the school committee this evening. So, Mr. Guile, if you'd like to take it away.
First of all, thank you very much for having us this evening. Before we begin, let's do a little introduction. I guess I'll start with the closest Swamper, if you would, please.
Orienteering: An Introduction to Cartography, Room 216, Wolf Swamp Road School.
And what is your name?
Sophia.
Sophia. Let's, Lena. Just say your name.
I'm Lena.
Lena.
I'm James.
James.
Margaret.
Margaret.
Willow Young.
Breanna.
Edgo.
Evan.
Excellent. And so, this is about half of Mr. Pratt's class here this evening to do a presentation on orienteering, which is just one of the many wonderful things going on at Wolf Swamp Road School. And with that being said, I'm gonna slide over and I become one with the machine while the students will present, so Sophia, come on up.
Orienteering: An Introduction to Cartography, Room 216, Wolf Swamp Road School.
Vocabulary: Cartography, scale, compass, compass rose, orient, triangulation, coordinate plane, coordinate, x-axis, y-axis, equator, latitude, primoridion, longitude.
Concepts: Skills developed. In this investigation, the classes explored the ancient art of cartography. This project is an extension of our unit in the Age of Exploration from our social studies curriculum. However, it ties in concepts from other disciplines, such as map skills, ELA, math, and technology. Map skills. The student, we have investigated the relationship between primoridion and equator on a map with coordinate plane, x-axis, and y-axis. They have noted the relationship of a point location coordinates on the coordinate plane, and latitude and longitude to identify a location on a map.
We have used a compass to create a compass rose on their, on our maps, and have learned how to orient our maps using both the compass rose and the compass. Most of us have become proficient at triangulating a point in the field and affixing that point to coordinate on a scaled map representation.
Okay, Will has picked the third known spot, and has oriented his paper correctly. He's now going to draw a line from that spot, right out of the flag, toward the other flag that he originally chose. Still orienting. Okay, and Lilly, leave your paper there. Put your paper back down. And we can see Will has a now-defined point, or three lines across on his paper, to mark where the flag has been placed in the courtyard.
Um, we have tied the concept of scale as ratio, coordinate plane, and measurement. We have synthesized the process into a piece of writing by using and explaining the role each vocabulary word plays in the process of making a map.
Um, we have produced a video presentation demonstrating and explaining the steps in the process that they have used in creating a map. Does anyone have any questions?
So, what was the best part about doing orienteering?
Um, probably getting to do it, because it was fun learning how we got to go in a courtyard and making a map of it, and orienteering our pa- orienting our paper to make, to triangulate towards the flag. It was actually pretty fun for me to do.
So, you started by making a map of the courtyard? Go ahead, Will.
We actually started making a map of our classroom, and then we went out into the courtyard and made a map of that.
Okay. So, how would you use this in the real world?
Like, as they explain, this is an ancient art of carto- cartography, and this ties in with some curriculums, such as map skills and stuff. And usually, you're gonna probably be able to use this. If you film a pulp window, you're gonna use this. And like, yeah, in a lot of places, you're gonna be able to use this.
Excellent. Breanna?
Um, well, learning this, um, like, if you're go- if you are, like, camping, you could, um, make a map of where you are. And if you ever lost, you can use the compass or the compass rose, and...
Well, um, in our social studies, um, we're learning about, um, the Age of Exploration, and a lot of the explorers, like Christopher Columbus, made lots of maps when they were discovering...
Cooper?
Um, also, if you were like, uh, like, an archaeologist, or like, an explorer, you might make maps of discoveries and stuff.
Could someone tell me the difference between latitude and longitude?
Well, latitude is on the x-axis, I think, and the, and the longitude is on the y-axis. So, on different accesses, so... And they use different way, and like, the, and latitude is kinda like the equator, and longitude is kinda like the primoridion. And they each play their own part in finding the, the coordinates of an object.
So, latitude is like, uh, north-south?
Latitude is like the, no, it's more like east-west, but it's the one that connect, divides north-south and la- and longitude, and the y-axis is kinda like the primoridion dividing east and west.
Good job. Anybody else have any questions for our fifth-grade friends? Well, I'm not only impressed with that, this, but I see some of the TV stars here as well. We saw your newscast, so this is extremely impressive about orienteering. Mr. Guile's been talking about it at meetings and saying that you were working with Mr. Pratt on it, but this goes beyond anything I expected in terms of how knowledgeable you are, and how you were able to answer questions. I'm extremely impressed, and your TV newscast was superb, too. Keep up the good work. And thank you all for coming this evening, and parents, thank you as well. They did a great, great job. Thank you. Thank you. They did a great job. Yes, yes. When I taught fifth grade, my test was, I told the students they had to tell me where they wanted to go on vacation and coordinates. Maybe you can give that to Mr. Pratt, and let him know where you wanna go on vacation. You can't name it, just give the coordinates, okay? And see if he can figure it out. That's right. It's his test. And when I was in school, the way that I learned, John, to your question of longitude and latitude, was longitude went long. That's the only way that I can remember it, so you guys are doing a great job. Latitude, you lay down. Yes. So, the fact that you guys have that under control, you're well on your way. So, thank you, guys. You did a great job.
I would just add, too, and correct me if I'm wrong, boys and girls, but almost a step two to this, and which we didn't talk a lot about, was actually using the GPS system to, to go next level with things, so...
Well, we didn't use the GPS yet. We're going to do that later on in the year.
Yeah, exactly.
And we kinda started doing that with like, the electronic compass, something like this one.
I wanna come over and sit in.
I know, I know. And just the last piece from a, from an administrative lens, I, I just have to recognize that it, this is really a reflection of, uh, of a lot of conversation, a lot of dialogue with, um, not only fifth grade as a whole, but the school, to, to really identify areas that, for example, coordinated planes, that was a, an area on the MCAS that we felt we could do better. So, we jumped in, uh, feet-first, and some situations head-first, and, and we're, we're, we're on top of things.
I, I understand. We had a conversation earlier in the year about one of the, uh, things you're doing in the wind block is rotating kids through challenging classes like this. Can you talk a little bit about how that's working, Mr. Guile?
Thanks. She is my assistant, by the way. What are you doing tomorrow from 95?
Probably school.
So, uh, yeah, I, I guess, to answer that, um, we're just trying to figure out the best way to maximize that block of time. We have, as, as I've mentioned, as we all know, some amazing, uh, staff. We're trying to capture their talents, if you will, and, um, and provide students with opportunities to really, um, I guess, two things, apply their knowledge in a meaningful way, like you saw here, something that really resonates with them, and then to also extend learning, um, and, and again, in a meaningful and authentic way, so... Yeah, we're, we're, we're looking at different models, uh, the, the explore block, if you will, which, which basically means kids would rotate between the, uh, the teachers during that wind block. That's a model we're looking at, um, so there's, there's a lot of talk going on about it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so, moving along, um, correspondence.
There is no correspondence for tonight's meeting.
Okay. So, from our visitors, do we have any comments? Okay, moving right along. There is no old business, so we will move forward to the superintendent's report, which I'm passing down.
They have me in the little chair, I'm not sure why, but...
Okay.
It's more comfortable.
It is, it is.
On the tall chair, we can sit.
I, I know that we had speakers last time that were concerned about the challenge going on at Blueberry Hill School, so we have a follow-up report for you. I met with Marie last week, she's been meeting with teachers. I joined them today for a meeting, in which they came up with a solution. The solution is that they're going to have three groups of challenge in the fifth grade, and the fourth section is going to be a learning lab, where there'll be math extra help and ELA extra help. The students in the challenge classes will choose which of the three challenge classes they'd like to take, and if they can honor all requests, they'll do that. The students will be in this for four weeks. Should they need to pull kids for extra help, they'll be able to do it. Also, students who have mastered the material and graduate can then join a challenge class if they, if they succeed in, um, mastering the material that they need to. Students will do that for four weeks, and then all students of Blueberry in the fifth grade will stop and do a simple machines unit, which is something that's extremely popular with the students, at which point they'll finish that up in about four weeks, and they'll go back to the model that I just described. This will be implemented on Wednesday.
Can, I'm just wondering, the kids who are within that sort of support block, can they switch into a challenge block midway through if they feel, if the teacher...
Yes, they can.
So, it's not, they're not locked in to...
They're, they're not locked in at all. If the teachers feel like they're done, they'll hop right into one of the challenge groups. In the same way, if a student feel like they're struggling, they can pop out of a challenge group and go over to the lab. They'll have a math teacher doing support for math, and the math, um, interventionist, and they'll also have, Ms. Perfoli's gonna start by doing ELA open response questions. So, they'll, they'll be very flexible grouping. Uh, Halloween was a huge success in Long Meadow. In my newsletter, you're going to see several pictures, because I spent time at the middle schools, and it was just extraordinary. In my report, I talked about, um, starting with Jamie, Jamie DeBurn, who came down dressed as Mr. Iron. You do know he's a science teacher, so, very funny. But he was dressed as the iron element. And then when we went down to the middle schools, we had Chris Collins and his assistant dressed as Batman and Robin. We had teachers dressed, teachers dressed as, um, uh, I'm trying to think what you wore, the hazmat suits, Kathy Rosato and her team. We also had students dressed as Alice in Wonderland characters, construction workers, et cetera. The pictures are phenomenal, I'll share with them with you in the newsletter. But it's a great thing that all the teachers, many of the teachers get into, as well as the students. And I think it's important to remember that we are dealing with kids, and to have fun once in a while is a good thing. In terms of the relationships between the students and staff, this just builds that camaraderie, in terms of sharing that special occasion, being able to dress. So, I was very pleased to see the school spirit in, in many of the schools on Halloween Day. The newsletter's complete, I'm waiting for a couple of pictures to finish it off, and it should be put out mid-week. Uh, negotiations are underway, and just for the community's benefit, we do not talk about anything that happens in negotiations. It's an agreement between the LEA and the school committee that everything's confidential until both decides agree that we bring something public. So, all you'll be hearing about is that we're meeting while negotiations go on. Everything is confidential. We do hope to, uh, we hope to finish up and ratify, hopefully, by February break. I do have attached for you with my report, the letter that Marie sent to the fifth-grade parents, so that you're aware of what communication is going on, and to know exactly what's happening with the wind block at Blueberry. Okay. Any questions for Marie? So, um, in my update, just that we had a, um, LEAF put on an excellent gala on Saturday night. They're very supportive of, of the district as a whole, and it was a, a night of a lot of fun and, and good times, so, for those of you who missed it, keep in mind next year. I, I do wanna thank the LEAF, particularly the gala committee. It is a ton of work to get all that together. Between the items for the auction and setting up, the centerpieces were beautiful. Twin hills look lovely. I, I'm not sure how much they raised, but it's a ton of work, and we do appreciate all the parents behind the scenes that make that happen. It brings in an extraordinary, extraordinary amount of money. I think everyone knows that we've hit the million-dollar mark in 12 years, and that is an extraordinary compliment to the LEAF Board, especially the LEAF Gala Committee that makes this happen. So, thank you, LEAF people. Absolutely. Also, as Marie had started her presentation, um, with the comments and concerns that we received last meeting, Marie and I have met, um, to develop a, a plan of action, which she's in the process of, of working on and, and implementing, and giving her the time up until the proposed meeting, or the scheduled meeting with parents on December 1st is something that I think, um, is only fair, considering that the initial meeting took place September 30th. Between September 30th, December 1st, we've had fall break. We will have, um, Veterans Day weekend and Thanksgiving break, so, you know, while it seems like a long time, it's not really that long when you're trying to get administrators together, teams of teachers together, administrators together, and then formulating a report back to, um, the community. So, Marie will be presenting her results to the parents December 1st at their agreed-upon scheduled meeting, and then she will also be presenting her results to us, the school committee, on our meeting, our first meeting in December, which will be December 8th. So, we'll look forward to that. And Joseph is not here this evening. Okay. So, financial report. John and Tom?
Uh, yes, we have a building use request, uh, that the finance subcommittee entertained, and, uh, I don't know, Tom, do you wanna make a few comments on that? For New Day Church in West Springfield.
The finance subcommittee received a request, uh, I don't know, maybe four, six weeks ago. And because of the revised policies of school committee regarding building use, it is a long-term rental, and would have a, uh, participation or attendance of over, um, 50 individuals, which require school committee approval on those type of requests. So, there was no formal action, uh, taken at finance sub regarding the request. There was a discussion, and there are representatives here from New Day Church. If you'd like to come up, um, to either answer any questions that may come up regarding the actual building use request, but that's why it's in here in front of you tonight for school committee consideration.
I... Did we, you talked about this last year, too?
It came up in the past, but not the way...
Not this partic-?
Yeah, not this particular formal request by New Day Church. This is the first time we're discussing it. There was dialogue, because we did revise the policy, school committee policy, regarding building use, uh, reflective of, uh, school committee approval is necessary when it's going to exceed 15 weeks, unless it's a youth organization or sports-related, and/or if participation exceeds 50 participants.
So, I guess my concern remains the same about what happens when we have sporting or school events.
Okay, so, before we get into discussion, could we have a, could I have a proposal, regarding this facility use request? Or a motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we reject the proposal. That we reject the proposal.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Do we have a second before we...
Well, we're just doing a motion, and then we can have discussion, so that we can all ask questions, and so, um...
Liz seconded it.
Liz seconded it. Okay, so, open for discussion regarding the proposal for the New Day Church. And, and as Tom said, our representatives are here. If you have questions specifically for them, or for Tom, um, can be addressed either way. So, Katie, you can...
So, I made the motion.
Oh, absolutely, John. Absolutely.
Well, thank you for the request and the interest in our building, but, uh, as, as caretakers for a new building, I'm concerned about the, the length of this contract that you're thinking of establishing, and, and the effect of wear and tear on the building. It also ties us up in terms of, um, more school-related, um, children, student-related activities that might be coming along on those calendar days. So, that's my thinking on this.
Can I speak to that, or is that okay?
Sure, absolutely.
I don't wanna speak to orienteering, just wanna make that clear. We are not smarter than fifth graders, okay? So, we're just gonna confirm that right away. But thank you for letting us be here, and, and I understand that concern, and you were gracious to, to raise that concern in this finance subcommittee meeting. What we try to express is that we try to be very minimal in our wear and tear, and we've been at the current location that we're, uh, that we're in at the Hall of Fame for five years now, with very minimal wear and tear on that facility. The actual amount of time people are in our services, they're an hour. They're 60 to 65 minutes. And the, the length of time that they're, there's a portion of that that they're standing and worship, it's a, it's a church service, and then there's a portion where they're sitting down. So, it's pretty minimal. When it comes to the students, you know, we have ch- children, you know, age birth, all the way up to about 12 years old, and now we have a tween ministry, so, goes to 13. You know, kids are kids, but they, they're in a pretty open space, and we have our own belongings. So, we try to bring in a lot of the things. We've been, we've been a portable church since 2008, so we have basically everything that we need to make church happen in open spaces, that being our own tables, our own chairs at times. So, uh, we try to be as minimal in the wear and tear as possible. And so, the second portion I just would like to say is, at the Hall of Fame, it runs at the same time that our church runs. So, it's completely open for business while New Day Church is. At that theater location, that portion is not the exhibition portion, so they can run the, the museum and keep things humming along. So, we kinda coexist there with people being there for, for, for other business. And with what the most recent proposal that we put forward, which I believe you have in front of you, is the request for the, the theater, the, excuse me, the auditorium here. And there's a wing of classrooms that have the, uh, different open spaces, and in a couple of classrooms would actually be the preferable option for New Day, rather than taking up the cafeteria like we originally requested, and the gymnasium, which from my initial conversation seemed to be the locations that probably have the most traffic, uh, possible traffic on a Sunday like New Day would, would be there for. So, on our end, I, I totally understand where you're, where you're coming from, but on our end, I feel like we would, we could do a very good job at probably running concurrently with whatever other event, so long as that event wasn't using the, the auditorium. That would be the one limitation, 'cause there wouldn't be anywhere to bring the amount of people that we have for the adult portion. I don't have anything to add to that.
Liz?
We have some, uh, annual events, such as like, class plays and things like that, that always happens on Sundays during the day. So, if something like that happened, were you willing to not have it on that Sunday? Or, do you know what I mean?
Sure, possibly. We, we've had in the past where we've had to be bumped. And we have kind of a limit for us, which is basically about two Sundays, is what we try to... This is, this is people's church. This is church for them, so, we don't have a building. We're portable, but, you know, 129 Long Meadow residents attend New Day Church. And so, we can't shut it down, you know, and, and not just Long Meadow residents, multiple residents from around the area. We gotta have church for them, so... We don't have a ton of options, especially the larger that we grow. And so, if we have advanced notice, though, if it's down to like, two or three, you know, something like that, that's possibly doable. Of course, less is better, and beyond that, it probably isn't okay, uh, for us. We just couldn't do it beyond that amount. Particularly if it's like, in the summer, we have more options. We can do a, a tent or something like that sometimes. And we've had to do that at previous locations. We were smaller then, but we can figure a lot out. We've had to do that in the past. If it was gonna be more than that, though, two or three, it'd probably be difficult.
Right.
Katie?
Yeah, I just come, I just keep coming back to the, you know, we just have so many things, and the auditorium, and that's, you know, we've got so many things going on with the arts, and kids have access and practices, and if, I, like, I feel like both ends of it would be continuously kind of disrupted, because you can't plan for the year a lot of times, so... I don't know, I just feel like it would be a lot of displacement back and forth for such a long, a long contract.
And for one, what, the contract that we were requesting, we don't really want a longer contract than a year. And what that year is really just to guarantee us that we have the year to be in place, which that is a long contract, I understand.
Yeah, that's right. You know, I'm just saying, like, as practices come up, as they near either, you know, orchestral performances, class plays, things that kids just need access to, that, you know, it, as time comes up, comes closer, you realize we need more time to prepare, we need, you know, and that's sort of my... As a teacher, I know that, like, I don't know that my kids are gonna be ready to perform in March, you know, that I can schedule how many rehearsals we're gonna need for a tech week, or two tech weeks, so... That's just...
And Tom, to that, have we calculated, um, the use of the auditorium specifically by our district? Meaning, you know, like, like Liz brought up a good point. Okay, there's senior class play, and then I'm thinking, then I know there's the dance recital, and I know there are the orchestra, and, and so, I'm not familiar with all of the uses that would impact weekend time. Have we...
Just related to the auditorium? Is that your question?
Or the classroom?
Well, the, the spaces that are being requested.
Yeah, um, in terms of classroom space on Sundays, I don't think that there's much use, but I would say that there are most certainly more than two or three, uh, instances where the auditorium is used either by school functions and/or other rentals. Uh, there are multiple dance recitals that occur on, uh, all weekend during the spring. We host a champion, a swim championship that uses, uh, pretty much the entire non-academic section of the building. That would most certainly be a challenge in terms of space and parking on, uh, that day. So, I can say with certainty it's more than two or three, uh, instances that the auditorium is used on a Sunday.
Okay. Okay. Kim or Michelle, did you have anything?
I think a lot of my questions have been asked.
I think a lot of my questions have been asked, haven't answered already, and it seems like you were looking for a year-long commitment, maybe bend on two or three Sundays, but it sounds like we already have those lined up, so probably doesn't make sense for, for you or for us.
Yeah, I can, I can only speak to what we can offer and, and what we couldn't do, you know, and one thing that New Day can offer is a revenue stream and I don't know what, and I know that's not what schools are, I was in education for ten years and so as a math teacher and assistant principal, so I know that's not what the school is, is, is designed for to build that revenue, but at the same time, if it's a low-used day, we feel like we can offer that and try to pay the fees that are, that are out front there and, and maybe bring something to the community, but beyond money, we also feel like we're, we could be a benefit and a help to the community and we'd love to do that in any way that we could, um, but this space would be something wonderful for us to utilize and, uh, that opportunity we'd, we'd love to have.
So if, uh, if it doesn't work out here, do you, are you going to just continue in the same space or do you have other, looking at other schools or other spaces?
Well, we're outgrowing our space and that's why we're here, we love our space, to be honest with you, it's beautiful, it's the Basketball Hall of Fame, it's wonderful, but it's just not a large enough venue.
Mm-hmm.
We're surprised that we're there five years actually because we don't plan to be here that long either, uh, we're not looking to stay portable, we would love to have our own building one day, but we're not at the point to build that building yet and we haven't found that perfect setup or scenario for that to take place. And so the benefit of having many more seats in the auditorium that you have here at the high school is the real perk to that for us, is we can grow and we can grow more efficiently. We have three services now to be at the size we are just because of seating issues, we wouldn't have that here, we'd go down to two just because your auditorium's so large.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Well, I, I guess if we drew up the things that we know are fixed that we just can't, you know, bend on and let's say there are five of them, are you still interested or-
I'd love to look at it, yeah, we would love to have a-
You know-
We would love to see that, we would love to see what the actual fee would be for us to be here, we've seen the sheet, but what would that look like for a week-to-week rental? And maybe that's exactly the asking price and that's what it is, we've also, everywhere we've been, because we're a weekly rental, they've usually reduced the no, normal going rate because it's so many weeks in a row, most rental rates are set for like a one-time or a two-time event, uh, but again, maybe it's the, there's no budging on that, so we have to talk that through. And if it's five days, I don't know, it depends on what those five days are, if they're in the middle of the winter, it's hard to put a tent out in the middle of the winter and have church outside, no one's going to come, so you probably shouldn't have put the tent out, but, uh, you know, depends, but we'd love to see that, I, I'd, I'd love to, to look at it.
Okay.
And do we know a starting date?
Uh, I don't necessarily know that.
We haven't gotten that far yet?
We were as, ours was as soon as possible, uh, for us too, though, because we, we can't just turn this around tomorrow or in the next couple of weeks. Right now where we sit, it would probably be ambitious to have a January first start date, to be honest with you, but it might be something we'd shoot for. Yeah, if you got like approval today, that would maybe be something we would shoot for, but it's going to take some time to figure some of those things out. We have some storage concerns to figure out, we have storage on location at the Hall of Fame, but we have to figure out some of those things and none of those are deal breakers for us, but just got some work to do once we find out where the next venue is for us.
Does this cross any lines for school-church issues?
Uh, I'm assuming you're referring to separation of church and state.
Yeah.
Uh, none that I'm aware of, I know the town, uh, actually New Day Church, uh, rented the community house prior to their, to previous, their current and previous location, so, uh, no- nothing that I'm aware of, I do know that there are other communities that do rent out space to religious groups for services, so, uh, it is not, uh, any kind of violation.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Okay, so then, John's, your motion was-
To disapprove.
To not approve the use, the, um, facility's use request.
Correct.
Okay, so all those in favor of not approving the facility's use ter, use request?
Sorry, I'm getting a pen.
Okay. Not in favor of approving, okay. Those in favor of approving the use request?
Well, I'm not in favor of rejecting it, I would like to, I was going to ask that we had a second motion to just kind of look at a calendar and see what it might entail.
Okay, so let's do the motion that's on the table right now, which is to approve, to not approve the request as presented, and then you can make a second motion.
Okay.
Okay, so not in favor of, uh, am I right?
I'm trying to get a count, so-
Okay, so those not in favor of approving the request as presented was me, John, Katie.
And Liz.
Liz.
Those, those are the, those are-
We're going to have two separate motions.
So this first one vote is for approving it the way John read it?
For not approving the request the way it's been presented to us, so denying the request-
Okay, for denying there.
Right, so those who are opposed to denying the request, i.e. in favor of approving the request as presented.
I mean, I guess, I guess so, but I'm not approving an open request, you know-
Okay, so-
There's still details that have to be worked out. Okay, I, I'll just abstain.
Okay, so that's two.
So two abstaining or two?
Or, I'll say.
She'll abstain.
Kim's for, Michelle is abstaining, okay. So, Michelle, now you wish to make another motion?
Well, what happened to my motion?
Your motion was passed for one-one.
Okay.
To deny it as presented tonight, okay? Now, Michelle, you wanted to make a motion?
Well, I, I don't know that I need a motion, I just would like to look at it again after we know what we have already scheduled that we can't let them use the auditorium, let's see what that leaves us with that we might be able to-
So why don't I go back and try to put a calendar together of events from the past year or two where we've had Sunday usage, whether it be school and/or permit-related and bring that back?
And community-related, is the permit-related?
Yeah, yeah, it would be all-
And bringing that back when to next meeting?
Um, it might be a little longer depending because not all of school-related events go through the permit process, schools can come in and use the facility without going through my office through a permit, so I would have to get with Mr. Dunkley to make sure we're clear on all of the various events that have, uh, taken place in the auditorium on a Sunday.
Okay.
I would think that would be, I would, I guess I was thinking that would be part of the negotiations is that when we, they worked, because he said he still has some things he has to work out on his end with, as far as storage and things like that, we still have to work out what days they wouldn't be available, is that correct?
Well, I would want to bring back to school committee for consideration whether or not the church is interested, if, if we would one, want to displace anything or two, meaning both students using it for practices and/or other permits, or then if the number is, um, in a large excess of two or three, then the church might not even pursue coming back, because if it's in the teens or twenties, it might be more of a problem where the church might have, uh, a desire to not pursue it. So I think I need to bring it back to you first with the information, uh, since there's a question about what are the number of conflicts that may exist on a Sunday.
Okay, and so out of fairness then, would you, um, because you're bringing back to the entire school committee with the dates?
Correct.
So, and not knowing the scheduling, would you then contact these fine gentlemen so that they can come back for the same information?
I most certainly will.
Okay, i- is that fair enough?
That's fine with us, and I just wanted to let you know too, I'd love to answer any questions or concerns that you have here or at any other time too, because I'm sure there's a lot, because we know, you know, you don't know us, and so, and you're going to let us into your building and it feels like a long time and we understand that and that concern, and we also have references that we'd love to give you, like from the people that we work with at the Hall of Fame, just to, you know, I wouldn't want to do that either is what I'm, I'm feeling, and I, I, I think it's prudent and wise and all those things, I'd love to be there to do that, and so any, any way that I need to be contacted, I'm happy to show up and talk through with anybody that has any questions.
And have you given the references to Tom already?
We've given the names, but I, I can give those again, probably the specific contacts, yeah?
That would be great.
We have even as far back as two thousand eight at the Long Meadow Community House and through to the Crown Plaza and then to the Hall of Fame and we can give you all of those names.
All right.
We have insurance as well, some of those questions come up and we can present all of those things to you.
Okay, well, I thank you for your understanding this evening, um, you know, and I think, Michelle, you raised a good point of what, maybe there are some things we hadn't thought about, um, you know, that hadn't come up at Finance Sub when we, we spoke with you the first time, so I appreciate your understanding and, and being willing to work with us while we still work out our own details.
No, it sounds great to us, we want it to be a good relationship, that's really important, we would never want it to not be good for you and for us and, and we, of course we want your building, we want to use it, it's beautiful, but we don't want it to not, if people are uncomfortable with that, so we'd love to work that out.
All right, well, thank you very much, and then Tom, as Tom said, as soon as he gets everything together, then, you know, when we get it, as soon as we can get it on a school committee agenda, um, you know, we'll definitely invite you back.
We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you both.
Yes, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, so, okay?
Other reports?
Huh?
Other reports?
Yes, but I thought I missed Mark and Sue, but you're later, yes, just keep hanging there.
Something to look for.
I know, green team, Liz, did you, I thought you had said you were having a meeting? Liz, love, hi.
Hi.
Green team, were you having a meeting? No.
No, it was the, um, joint energy, but it's, it's next week.
Okay. And Michelle, Operations Sub?
Operations, uh, we met and we just tried to figure out some goals for the upcoming year and what our roles were, um, and we don't have another meeting scheduled yet, but we're looking at that in the next month or two.
Okay, and between last week and this week, I don't think any other Subcommittee met, which is why I wasn't going to go through each and every one. So we will get on to our other action items, which we have Mr. Mark Oldenburg here from our new Director of People's Services, who has a presentation for us, so Mark, the floor is yours.
It's way down the bottom mark, you're looking for, um, LHS BTC?
Yeah, it looks like my, um, computer had, it, it's been bumping me off AirPlay a little bit, it just takes me a moment to find it. I just had it up with Neil. Let's see here, I'm sorry.
They do our technology.
Nine-five-eight, right?
Yeah.
Sort of.
It was just here a second ago, I promise.
It did the same thing to me where it-
Yeah, it sort of disappeared from the toolbar actually, I'm looking for it.
So you have home share, right?
Oh, there it is, okay. And it's all the way down here, I believe.
Working on college application D?
That's what Neil-
All the way to the bottom.
Got it, thank you. Thank you for your patience, okay. Okay, thank you for having me tonight, um, as introduced, I'm Mark Oldenburg, Director of People's Services here for Long Meadow Public Schools, um, for the general viewing public, I, um, I started in Long Meadow Public Schools on August eighteenth of this school year, uh, was previously employed by the Department of Massachusetts, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and I worked for the Program Quality Assurance and we audited school districts, uh, for their compliance federally and statewide for special education, civil rights and English as a second language programming. Uh, tonight's update will serve as a overview of, uh, people's services, our responsibilities, uh, and, um, our programming to date for the, for the school year. Okay. Our umbrella includes, um, special education services within the district, civil rights and English language learners, all from ages, uh, three through twenty-two. Uh, under the umbrella of special education, we provide, uh, transportation for all students with special needs, we monitor bus routes within our office, provide professional development to drivers, specifically bully prevention intervention, and we troubleshoot daily issues, uh, with busing, including, um, rescheduling routes, uh, discipline and behavior. If anybody has any questions, I, as I go along, please interrupt me. Um, we also, in people's services, monitor and supervise all the nursing staff across the district, so I oversee with my staff, uh, six full-time nurses, I meet with them on a monthly basis, I met with them today at three o'clock actually, um, and our nurses obviously address the daily needs of all our students and staff. Um, I provide, uh, well, people's services provide professional development for, for all nurses, um, they work with the building staff and principals to plan out the field trips and to schedule substitutes as appropriate within the buildings, and they run immunization clinics for us as well. Also, under our umbrella of people's services, those are school adjustment counselors. Currently, uh, we have one point four full-time, uh, school adjustment counselors at Long Meadow High School, we have a halftime, uh, school adjustment counselor at Glenn Brook Middle School, also a halftime at Williams Middle School, we have a, uh, full-time, uh, a school adjustment counselor at Wolf Swamp Road Elementary School, a point six, uh, school adjustment counselor at Center School and a halftime at Blueberry Hill Elementary. And I believe, uh, Long Meadow High School shares their, um, school adjustment counselor one of the point four with Center School, and Glenn Brook shares their, uh, school adjustment counselor with Blueberry Hill and Williams, uh, is a standalone at halftime. Uh, specifically for special education within the district, we currently have five hundred and forty-eight students on our roll, uh, those students are all between the ages of three and twenty-two years of age. Um, at the elementary level across the district, we do have an integrated, uh, preschool program, that's housed at Center School, uh, we have, all our elementary schools practice inclusionary practices, uh, kindergarten through fifth grade, we do have multiple learning centers across the district at the elementary level, which is also can be known as a resource room. We have an autistic program now at the, um, elementary level and we have language-based learning disabled programs as well. Uh, for the middle schools, we also practice inclusionary practices, grades six through eight, we have learning centers, also known as resource rooms again, and we do have, uh, also language-based learning disabled programs there as well.
Could you explain what that means, language-based learning disabled? They don't speak English?
Um, they, their disabilities impact their, their learning, uh, either, uh, reading, writing, speaking, so it's, um, it's, it's referred to as an LLD program, so the curriculum is modified as appropriate, um, based on their, on their learning profiles and their disability.
Okay, so it's not just form of language?
Nope, no, we do have, uh, we do have a population of, um, English as a second language learners across the district, but they, they're not, um, they're, they're not taught within those programs there. At the high school, we do have a new life skills program that opened up this, uh, school year, it is, uh, full inclusion, grades nine through twelve again, and we also have, uh, learning centers across all grades. Across the district, we do have many specialized services, including occupational therapy and physical therapy, uh, vision therapy, speech and language therapy, adaptive physical education, autism consultation along with behavioral and hearing consultation, school adjustment counseling, vocational coaching and assistive technology consultation as well. That occurs across the district, um, elementary through high school. Uh, we do have, um, some out-of-district placements as well where our students are educated, um, not within, um, Long Meadow Public School buildings and those, we have a partnership with the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, so when appropriate, we do utilize their placements within the six other towns and districts that we are in the collaboration with. We also use, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary-approved public day schools and private day schools, approved residential schools by the state, um, private residential schools- schools. We also do have a few students in hospital and our home settings while we're educating them. We have virtual learning and parentally placed students as well, in which we monitor with a parent places students out of district, and we, pupil services, responsible for monitoring that placement and updating the IEP as appropriate. Oh, does it repeat? Oh, I'm going backwards. What's new for special education in 2014-15? This year, the district did add three new special education teachers at the elementary level. Each building, each elementary school got a new special educator, which is, they are highly qualified teachers. They did lose two paraprofessionals, I believe, or more at each building, but they, the theory was that we could, when we added highly professionalized teachers, that would add to the instruction and add to the achievement level of the students. We did adopt a new life skills program at the high school. We have, we also created a new middle school aged autistic program at Glenbrook Middle School, and a developmentally delayed program at Center School for elementary-age students. And I believe that is my presentation. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mark? All right. Well, thank you. Wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry.
Population of special needs increasing or decreasing, or is it flatlining?
Within the district, it, from what I've looked at the last three years, has been decreasing.
Decreasing?
Decreasing.
Slightly, yep.
Is that something you could predict is going to continue, or is that just the way that dice rolls?
I think it's been decreasing for specific reasons around improved instruction and improved techniques of identification with the district curriculum accommodation plan. And I would think that the population would continue to decrease slightly over the next three to five years, would be my professional opinion. We have adopted RTI, and we, and they are, that is a response to teacher interventions, and it's specifically designed to help regular education students before they achieve, like, a special education criteria. And I think if we keep along that path, like we have been doing it, we should see a decline.
Katie? So, my question is really based in dreaded test scores. Our sped test scores have really taken a dip consecutive years in a row. So, what is your plan to sort of meet that need directly so that we can help these kids achieve more in their, be able to pass the MCAS at a more reasonable rate?
Mm-hmm. I think that's a struggle for a lot of districts across the Commonwealth, and I think particularly here, we, I, one of the reasons why I chose to come work here is because the district was implementing RTI. And I think that, I'm not putting all my eggs in that basket, but I think it's, as we're doing targeted instruction across all levels, and we're monitoring students throughout the year to see how this targeted instruction is affecting them positively or negatively, and then making adjustments along the way, I think it's going to be a great success for all of our students, including students within special education.
So, do you think that the sped department has, like, a hands-on role in implication of RTI?
We do. It's a partnership between regular ed and special ed.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Mark? All right. Well, thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate it.
Sue? I didn't, are you going to project, Sue?
I think I got it.
Okay, so, John, you might want to stay, because our next presenter is Sue Bertrand, who's the Assistant Superintendent of Learning, and she's going to share with us what's going on in her office.
So, it's my family again. It should pop up in a second. Technical difficulties, one moment.
There you go.
It's the, that was PowerPoint actually quit on me.
Though we're enjoying the family.
Oh, for goodness sakes. I don't want to show it.
Do we not have?
There we go.
There we go.
So, I too had a great time at the LEAF Gala, most importantly. Just played a pretty bad hair night. It was a lot of fun. Nice to get out and talk to parents in a, well, comfortable setting and have a great time, so thanks to LEAF for that, for sure. And I'm just going to chat a little bit about what we do in our department. It really is my assistant, Carla, Zakowski and I, and she deserves some kudos for putting up with me in this new position and training me. So, in our department, we work on a myriad of things. I'm discovering more and more every day, but the majority of our work, at least at the start of the school year, has been around curriculum planning and development and professional development. And then other things that we delve into are teacher evaluation, DDMs, teach point, student feedback, or new parts of the evaluation tool. Teacher licensure is a big deal for our department. We have a couple of grants that we work on, Title I and II-A, which are very involved grants, and we have a small academic support grant for LHS, too, that I'll chat about. But tonight, I kind of cut the presentation in half, and I'll talk about the areas in black and then save the red for later on in the school year when I present again, so we can get out of here before midnight.
And what are DDMs?
District determined measures. They're measurements that staff determine based on assessments and observations of their students, where the areas they feel they need to get better at. So, they develop a district determined measure, and it's, all first graders have the same DDM, all second grade teachers have the same DDM, all science teachers at the high school have the same DDM, as long as they're teaching the same subject. And then the DDMs drive their goals in their evaluation. So, it's a big deal, and it's been a lot of development for DDMs, but that's next time, John. All right.
And Sue, DDMs are basically ensuring the same education, no matter what building a student is in, because they're all meeting the same goals or endpoints.
That's right. They're like common, they almost mandate common assessment, Janet, across the board. And DDMs, just to talk about for two seconds, need to be based on an MCAS area if you're a teacher who teaches MCAS subjects. So, three through 12, everybody has an MCAS goal, a DDM as well as educators, administrators. Okay. So, at Central Admin, we took a look at our curriculum review and kind of tore it down and built it back up based on our need. So, we're, I'll run through what we're doing in curriculum reviews, and please know that even if it's not a curriculum review year for a specific subject area, we're still always looking at it. Okay? I probably should put my glasses on so I can see. At the English Language Arts, literacy has become our main goal. We have Reader's Workshop and Writer's Workshop pathways in the elementary schools. This is the last year. All teachers should have gone through both Reader's and Writer's Workshop and be using that with pretty good expertise in their classrooms. We've developed a common high-frequency word list across all grades, K through 2, in all school buildings. That's new, and they're working on a 3 through 5 list of common high-frequency words. We have new literacy labs at the middle school, where they use iReady, which is a computer-based tool for assessment and instruction, and the literacy teachers today just sent an email asking for some funding for some more classroom-based libraries, so that'll probably come up soon. We use Foundations, it's a new program that we adopted for K-1 and 2. We're really going to start in, I'm sorry, first grade this year, and some second graders are using it. It's a spelling slash word study program. It's not in kindergarten, it's first, I'm sorry.
So, are we using that in place of, like, the word study block of Fanta's and Penel?
Yeah, in some cases. In most cases, I used, no, you don't have anybody there, so, yeah, yes, yep. They had PD on that early in the summer, so all first graders are using it and some second graders. It's kind of like a grassroots thing, so you really have to start in first grade and then move up.
And then move up.
Yep.
So, are we, we're just abandoning what we had done?
The Fanta's and Penel Word Study? I think they're using it as supplemental stuff, but they really needed something cohesive across the district that they could use. Yep, that was the vote.
The committee looked at it last year. Sue wasn't on the committee, so I can answer that.
Okay.
The committee looked at it, and they piloted Foundations, and they felt that it was easier to implement, given the number of preparations that they had. So, the teachers that piloted it highly recommended it, so the first grade teachers agreed to try it this year. Some of the second grade teachers are piloting it. Kindergarten's been using it with great success. So, we'll replace the other.
They're really excited to get the boxes when they came in, so I know they really looked forward to it. They're working on common word studies for grades 3 through 5, to really look at how words are broken down and how to decode and encode words. At the high school, they're incorporating nonfiction unit at all levels, across all grades, as a response to the Common Core, looking at more nonfiction work. There's been a major increase in research projects at LHS, in ELA, and across the board, really. And a kind of just a cool thing is, LEAF was generous enough to grant some funds for LHS juniors and seniors to go, to work with the Shakespeare and Company folks, and the department had, met with the director, and the students will go to see a play in March, and then they'll have an opportunity to do Q and A with the actors after. So, that's courtesy of LEAF, that grant. In math, we have a huge elementary math committee that's met a couple times to work on scope and sequence and related to Common Core, and we're exploring new math programs for the elementary level. The middle level adopted new texts at all levels last year and the year before, and they're using those with some digital options for learners. And the high school continues to work through scope and sequence planning and course planning to address the Common Core as math standards kind of get pushed down through the curriculum.
I hate to be a pain, I'm sorry. One of the things that I know that was, seemed to be a struggle in years past is that the jump to middle school, teachers felt like the kids weren't as ready as they could be.
Yeah.
So, is there, are there more opportunities for the middle school teachers to be working with the elementary teachers on the committee so that they can all be on the same page instead of sort of surprised they show up in middle school?
Yeah, they are looking at it as a K through 12 initiative, so it's, when we're looking at the elementary curriculum thing, that'll help with that, but the middle school and high school teachers met to talk about how they're going to make that transfer, really they're going to end up pushing some of the high school math down to the middle school more, yep.
And they're talking to elementary teachers, so like, it's trickling down to the...
Continuing, right, yeah.
Thank you. Can I just ask a question? So, on, so right now, we initiated a new Foundations for first graders?
Yeah.
Not us. And we've also got the first grade teachers doing a new math program, piloting?
If they chose to, or elected to, yep, yep. That was pure choice on the...
No, I know, I figured, I met with someone and found out.
Yeah.
I just, I'm asking the question.
Sure. In science, we're not up for review, but technology and education, we're looking at closely. They're addressing science at the elementary level. We have full use of Discovery Education at the middle level, which is an awesome tool. If you ever have a chance to take a look at that, that's a wonderful online curriculum that we're using all out at the middle schools.
We pay for, is that, that's the electronic technology?
It's electronic, yep.
So, when we pay, do we pay for a certain number of licenses for it, for student, by student, or do we pay by district?
I haven't gotten the bill yet, so I'll let Tom answer that.
Well, when we entered into the agreement, it was for six years, and it was based on the number of students at the middle school level. So, it is based on the number of students enrolled.
Katie, most of the companies now, we're asking teachers to get the electronic version along with the textbook. They're still requiring the textbook, but the electronic usually comes for an extra $5 or $10. So, Tom's done a great job at my request to negotiate, and we get at least a six-year contract to hold to those prices. So, it's a good deal. I think the day is going to come, in the next three to five years, you'll see no textbooks at all, but right now, for both teacher and student ease, as well as this is the way the companies are giving them to us, textbook with the additional electronic version.
I'm just thinking, too, like, my fourth grader's tech, science textbook, the copyright's, like, from 2000. So, it would be, you know, if we could sort of expand the electronic uses in the elementary school, too.
Definitely. Some of our new e-readers really address science as well, so...
So, they're using it in their literacy block and not...
Hopefully. I haven't seen anybody using it yet, but we just rolled out the e-readers recently, so...
I'm, I don't mean, I really don't mean to...
No, it's...
You do, you know.
Yeah, we'll talk after, Katie.
I like acronyms.
Social Studies, the elementary committee will start this year and work on scope and sequence, and I feel like sometimes, you know, it's a subject that kind of takes a backseat because it's not a, an MCAS subject, but we do great things in social studies. Middle school is exploring Discovery Ed for social studies. That's a Discovery Channel product, actually, so it's got all of the great things that you see if you have Discovery TV and then some. High school is looking at a world history text at grade nine and 10, and their goal is to be fiscally responsible and adopt one text for two subjects, two grades, I should say, ninth and 10th, and they're looking at books right now to do that.
Science, library science skills at the high school?
We're going to get to the tech piece at the end, John, but Lori is actively involved in teaching library science skills to her, the high school staff, the high school kids, and staff, actually.
Are all of the social studies teachers doing this?
I don't know that answer. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Lori is who?
Lori Robbins is the library media specialist at the high school.
Okay.
So, what is your question exactly, so I can get you an answer?
Well, we've got an excellent facility there. I'm just hoping that they're getting, the students are getting some instruction in how to use, you know, not just textbooks, but...
Oh, they absolutely are, yep, yep.
...into the library and find material.
Yep, I just met with Lori...
Put their own textbook there.
Friday afternoon, and they are all about research and being able to go to the right places to find it. So, Lori's going through it with the students. Your question was, are the staff, the staff trained in that? I'll get that answer for you, if they've gone through some PD on that.
Okay.
I know Lori does a lot of PD during their early release days, their full days.
Sue, one question, jumping backwards. Are the elementary level, they're working on scope and sequence for social studies this year?
Yeah, we're just going to start diving into that this year.
Okay. Science, scope and sequence is not...
Not their turn.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. So, where am I? Oh, PE and Health.
Sorry, we keep, you said interrupt.
In PE and Health, and it's kind of exciting to me, because all this is new for me to learn and dive into. So, the goals in science, I'm sorry, in PE and Health were to increase moderate to vigorous activity levels in the PE class and provide ways to monitor physical activity outside the classroom, to address social emotional needs through improving physical fitness habits, impacting academic performance by enhancing and expanding physical activity throughout the school. There's lots of research that says a good bout of exercise before someone takes an assessment increases assessment, you know, grades. So, there are all kinds of things that they're diving into. They're using FitnessGram at the middle level to track fitness levels, and they did a big PD on that this afternoon in their half-day, and that's like an app that they can use and the kids can use to track their physical activity. And K through 12 is going through a mindfulness slash yoga unit, so that kids will start to get some mindfulness and kind of kindness training, starting in kindergarten, and they already do a pretty good yoga unit at the high school, so they're just trying to develop those skills, K through 12. And I think I put, oh, yeah.
Oh, my God, what is she doing?
This is a rail yard that is at Wolf Swamp School right now, and this is a really cool tool that we purchased for the PE department at the end of last year, and it can be stacked and restacked and moved all around, and kids are loving this. This is a unit that they worked on. You can see, I think kids are doing ropes in the background and things like that, so this is an activity unit to get active.
I'm so glad I'm not a gym teacher. That looks so damn...
Well, I like the girl, I, yeah, with the legs up in the air.
Yes.
Do we have a report from the Wolf Swamp nurse?
You're okay there. I sign off on those, they're fine.
Yeah, it's really an awesome tool, and it can go from school to school.
I was going to ask that today.
Yeah, it's portable, it can go from school to...
Looks awesome.
And finally, an area that I can talk about with some confidence here, special education. The curriculum in special ed is always under review, always under revision for best practice, and it's based on individual needs of students. So, we have probably 30 to 40 curriculums that we use on any given day and any given grade, but we use, in Gillingham, that's a, that came through a grant from the Masons. Language for Learning is a literacy program. Wilson Reading is a really lockstep. Wilson Reading is a really lockstep fundamental reading program. V and V is a program, visualizing and verbalizing is a program for students who have trouble with comprehension. Seeing Stars is another reading program. Lexia is an electronic reading program that measures students' levels of reading and provides books. Great Leaps is a fluency program. VMath is an electronic program for students who struggle with math and need more lockstep instruction. Cloud Nine and Touch Math are both kind of hands-on math programs so that kids can get the tactile experience of math. Ascend is an online program. And Social Detective is a social skills program that's being used. It's a really small sampling of all the programs that we have out there in special education, so.
So the Wilson program there, is that the same Wilson program that makes Foundations?
Yep, yep, yep. Instructional Technology will start committee work this year. We've got a meeting set up for the week after next, I want to say, to look at scope and sequence of skills to be taught to address our digital world, which will change probably in five days after we decide them. We'll determine best ways to integrate technology into the general education and specialist areas, and they're already doing that across the board everywhere. Determine how technology education can enhance the science and social studies curriculum and determine how technology will enhance a challenged curriculum as well. So those are our goals for that committee work. And then the other thing that we've been working on lots since the start of the school year and before is professional development. So you've probably heard about this 10 times, but on August 26th and 27th, we had mini-conference format for PD, which was awesome. Teachers finally got to choose areas of interest and attend PD. There were probably 30 workshops run three, three times each, so, or three, during three sessions. So there was lots of opportunity for lots of professional development. We had really a lot of good feedback. I've forgotten how many positive, like 95% positive feedback on it. It was something really way up there. The, we did, we had PD on technology tools, reading, writing, math, behavior management, all kinds of things. On the early release days, which today was one, we worked on units related to the PD day. So if you went to a technology professional development, you were charged with creating a unit on how you would use technology in the classroom in some way, shape, or form. And we're gathering all of those create projects to share with colleagues. And today, in the elementary schools specifically, teachers discussed and worked on challenge work in the curriculum. And this is the last year, I believe, if we can get through it, for Readers and Writers Workshop at the elementary level. Last year, folks could pick either readers or writers and go through a year's training. And this year, we have mostly folks in the writer's workshop pathway, and there are a handful of folks who need readers. And after that, I think our emphasis will probably be on collaboration and more math-related stuff and stuff.
Wait, wait, when you say the last year for it, you just mean the last year that you're training?
Training, training, let me make it clear, yes, that we'll continue on, yes. Yeah.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you for the clarification. Middle School will continue with the mini-conference offerings for the rest of the school year. During the full-day PDs, we have one coming up next week and then there's another one in March. LHS is working on common assessments and alignment of Common Core curriculum in all areas in their PD. And they also have had some library media specialist workshops and special education offerings at the high school level. So lots going on in PD for that kind of stuff. We have a lot of grant-funded PD we were lucky enough to get. The speech paths typically attend the ASHA Speech and Language Conference, or some of them do. We've had grant-funded Orton Gillingham training, which is extensive training that teachers launch into, and it's a two-year, really rigorous path. The third is the physical education teachers, is Kathy still here?
Mayford.
Yeah, that's how you say it, Mayford. It's the Mass Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. Is that right, Kath?
Yes.
Okay. So we have some teachers headed out to that soon. There are our literacy coaches and our, one of our middle-level literacy lab coaches is, are currently at the Leslie University Literacy for All Conference. I've had a few emails today from all of them saying how great it's been and all the things that they want to try when they get back that will cost money. The Western Mass Writing Project is coming to us through a grant through the Collaborative, and they are doing training on assessment and writing. TLA is literacy training at elementary, and KES Literacy is at the middle level, so.
Sue, Liz had a question.
Oh, sorry, Liz, I can't see down there.
I was just going to ask you, what do your peers do when they, when all these teachers are doing this other like curriculum writing training?
They they typically attend the training if it's appropriate for them. And then we've also run other trainings specifically for them. But they're working alongside the teachers in the classroom, so they definitely go to the TLA and the KES Literacy and those kinds of things because they're, they need to know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Sure.
Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but I haven't seen the word ecology or the word environment in any of these areas.
You haven't.
Isn't that something we should be focusing on? I mean, it's something that relates to science. It certainly relates to social studies.
It's built into the science.
Well, this is just, this is just grant-funded professional development, so we are doing things like that. Marie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, John, the environmental issues are built into science. An awful lot's done. Remember the Water for Wasala that grade seven's doing at Glenbrook? It's done throughout the grades that we make sure that the environment ecology is part of the curriculum, integrated with the science.
Okay, is it part of social studies as well?
It's blended.
I think there are times it comes up and there are times it doesn't. It depends on the unit that they're doing.
I think Water for Wasala is a social studies.
Water for Wasala is social, it's all of them. They they do it across curriculum.
And then I think the most important thing that we do that is for professionals by professionals, teachers who work in the district teach to other teachers after school. They have PGC courses. A sampling or a smattering of what's being offered right now is using Writer's Notebook to unlock the writer within. And I think Chris Collins' kids spoke to Writer's Notebook last Monday or Tuesday. It was a short time ago. Advanced Smartboard, yours is being offered, advanced website design, forwarding literacy with mentor texts, the ABCs of autism, integrating art into your curriculum and managing ADHD. These are, it's just a sampling of PGC courses that our teachers and paraprofessionals can take after-school hours in order to learn more and to be a better teacher. So I'm going to leave it at that and talk about the other things that we do later in the year. Other questions, comments?
I know you said these are just a sampling. Are there, are there some that are integrating technology into their curriculum?
The Advanced Smartboard would definitely cover that, for sure, but yeah, yeah. So the teachers, there's more technology. The teachers do a proposal to us and then we either say you need to add more or this is great and let them run with it, kind of like a college course after school.
We focused on having technology courses every single year to make sure that there are several offerings for teachers throughout the year.
We have, on the 11-10, we have a Google Classroom, which is full. It's got 30, 30 people in two sessions, so, yeah.
And then I have another one.
Yeah.
Earlier in the presentation, you mentioned mindfulness and yoga.
Yeah.
Being integrated into, is it in the PE?
It's in PE and Health.
Okay, now, I have some, I know some of our elementary school teachers actually have talked to me about, you know, integrating some of that into their classroom. Do we, because they do, I know my first-grade teacher actually did some yoga in her classroom to help out with the kids.
I think the goal is to get all of the PE and Health teachers trained up and then have them teach the teachers some strategies for, you know, before test-taking or before MCAS, some deep breathing and, you know, maybe some physical activity before they start something out. But the goal is to get the PE teachers and health teachers trained first so that they can do Train the Trainer kind of model stuff, yeah.
Any other questions for Sue? All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Between you and Mark, your offices look quite busy.
All right.
Moving forward with our warrants, John, when you're ready.
Okay. I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the school launch fund for fiscal year 2015, dated November 14, 2014, in the amount of $91,019.83.
The motion, do I have a second? Who has a second? All in favor? Okay, unanimous?
Okay, I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2015 of the General Operating Fund for fiscal year 2015, dated November 14, 2014, in the amount of $90,000, $90,007.38.
The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
One second, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, there is no consent agenda. So that's it for the warrants. So we'll move on to the minutes.
Katie? I move that the school committee approve the minutes.
And not release.
And not release the minutes to the executive session on June 9, 2014, school committee meeting as presented.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous, Dan?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the October 14, 2014, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, unanimous?
And I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the October 15, 2014, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right, so we do have an executive session planned for this meeting. May I have a motion?
I move the school committee adjourn into executive session for the purpose of strategy as it relates to collective bargaining with Unit A to reconvene into open session. Motion requires a roll call vote.
And could you please add in potential legal action?
And potential legal action.
Okay, and we will reconvene into open session. We require a roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
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 Okay, we thank you very much. Have a great evening and we will see you back here in two weeks.